You see how dusty this computer is?
Uh huh.
So I don't use it.
Oh, and you keep it open, obviously?
Yeah, it sits downstairs in the basement of my office. I use my iPad and a keyboard most of the time, but that's dead. I didn't charge it earlier.
Uh, well, you could have brought it, you could have plugged it in.
No, I'll charge it when I get here. I need it tomorrow. Damn, county commissioners have a joint meeting with Parks Commission tomorrow.
Yeah, that's what I hear.
I hope they do some, because Lewis Henry Park's actually a nice park.
It is. I love that park.
But they can keep the crackheads out of there.
I know. When I go walking around the back of the lake, you can see gunfights happening all the time.
I know. I like to scare them. I drive through there sometimes, like, slow roll it, I'll turn the siren on, and just watch and see who runs. Now it's filling up.
Yep.
Hey, there's that guy who married my ex-wife.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Good to have you all here. Is it your first council meeting? Yep. Glad to have you. Thank you. Okay. Welcome to this April twenty-first city council meeting. Katie, could I have a roll call for attendance, please?
May, Councilwoman Beverly. Burns?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Morrissey?
Here.
Soha?
Present.
Stuccio?
Here.
Wolfram?
Here.
Mayor Protagonio?
Here.
Seven, uh, one.
Okay, looks like Matt was here at one point. Unless, did you put that stuff on the desk?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Huh, uh. Okay, thank you. Um, we've, oh, there are agendas for those who are here for the first time as you walk in. If you want to follow along, they're on my right by the door. Okay, let's move on to approval of the agenda. We have a few items to add here. We have two items from the ONG committee. The first is the minutes from our April seventeenth meeting. And, uh, the second is a set of reforms to the, um, to the way that we call committee meetings. Uh, it's, it's not expressly laid out in rules of procedure, who could call a committee meeting and what they would consider. Uh, so we created some rules for that, which, uh, the council members should have in front of them. Uh, one of the main items that are, so we, we passed that, the new rules of procedure. We also recommended, uh, this is me, Councilman Morrissey and Councilman Stuccio. We recommended against the, um, Officers' Compensation Committee's recommendation for a council race. So those are the two, um, primary items there. Do I have a motion on the minutes and the rules of procedures to add to the consent agenda? Motion from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Soha, to add the ONG April seventeenth committee meeting minutes and the new rules of procedure to the consent agenda? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it? What was the other item? Two letters, it looks like. Um, let's see, we have a letter from Kyle Kirsten, and it was this other one from Sue. Not seeing the last name. Sue Arnold, okay. This was
Oh, that's
just for me. About a loose dog. Okay, so maybe we won't have that one to the agenda, but that, that could be in the minutes. Okay. To add this communication to the agenda. Or I guess we don't really need to add this to the agenda. We can just read it during the officers' compensation, a letter opposing the pay raises. Okay, anything else to add to the agenda? Motion from Councilman Soha to approve the amended agenda, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We have an agenda. We'll move on to public comments on agenda items. Please, uh, restrict your comments to agenda items only. The podium is open. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you. Oh, great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Greg Bailey. I'm a resident of the City of Hillsdale, residing at Seventeen Fox Town Lane in the Three Meadows subdivision. I come before the City Council this evening to address the agenda item for officers' compensation. I believe I can speak with some credibility on the issue, having served as a City Councilperson from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-five, and also serving as mayor from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and one, and continuing service as a member of the board and director of Hillsdale Hospital since nineteen ninety-five, including a seat on the stand committee for officers' compensation, which has set the compensation for the last three hospital administrators. I agree that the mayor and Hillsdale City Councilperson's compensation should be increased, since apparently it has remained the same since two thousand and fifteen. I was actually a member of the Officers' Compensation Committee in two thousand and fifteen that determined these salaries, which were unadjusted from years past. And frankly, shame on all of us. This commission is supposed to meet every two years, no matter what. Does that read the charter? There are apparently no meetings in two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, or two thousand twenty-three. Now, I know the amount of hours needed to perform this job effectively, and I believe that there should be reasonable compensation for this service. However, I do not agree with the determination that has been put forth by the current Officers' Compensation Commission for a number of reasons. When the hospitals' compensation committee meets, we are provided with compensation figures from similar-sized hospitals. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. The data is out there. I do not believe that the City of Hillsdale Officers' Compensation Commission utilized any comparable information for like-sized cities in making their determination. But I do believe that you now have that information in town's council packet, and if you look closely at those numbers, you know what I'm about to say. For cities with population between seven and ten thousand, with Hillsdale eight thousand thirty-six, the average compensation per mayor was thirty-six hundred. City of Hillsdale is currently at thirty-seven hundred. For those same cities, the average compensation for a City Councilperson was two thousand one twenty-six. City of Hillsdale is currently at fourteen thirty plus thirty dollars per committee meeting. This data also includes the taxable value for each community and a figure for annual expenditures, and Hillsdale was second to last in both of those categories. I do believe that the City of Hillsdale is unique among this group of cities, having an electric utility, municipal airport under its control, as well as a college and a county fairgrounds within city limits. This presents both challenges and opportunities for the elected officials and administration, which would justify moving to a higher percentile of compensation. The termination proposed by the Officers' Compensation Committee is twenty-five thousand per mayor, which is over three times the highest for like-sized cities. The proposal for a councilperson is ten thousand, which is over two times the high for comparable cities. I do not believe that Hillsdale is unique enough to justify that larger increase. I do appreciate the commission's desire to expect more involvement from their government officials, but I do believe that the word "better governance" is not achieved by boosting these numbers. In my opinion, the only reasonable course of action is for you to reject the determination of a commission and make sure that they have the appropriate information when they next meet in two thousand twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Appreciate it.
Hello, Channing G. and wife. Um, on the compensation, I don't have enough information. I don't know why the increase. I don't know what I'm gonna get for my money. You know, because it's a job opportunity. It's a job increase. So for me, right now, I am saying no, because I need more information. I want to know what you're going to do, you know, to do, what, what you're gonna do more than you have been doing. I know the previous councils, they didn't read a lot of the statements, because I would ask them, you know, a, a line item that came down on the bills. They had no idea what I was talking about. It was line items. I read the line items. Am I gonna get that? I don't know. So I would like to know. I know you guys are limited, because really, you, you are being halfway volunteering. You really are volunteering for this job. And I do a lot of volunteer work, and I know a lot of hours go in. I don't mind an increase. I just want to know, maybe not as high, but what are you going to do for the increase? I'd like to see more of you guys take control and let you control our city manager, and not the city manager control of you. Right now, he's got a lot of overhead. He's taking care of BPU, the gas, the city. He's a, he's a big head over a lot of things, and to me, it's too much. But if the City Council would pitch in and help oversee some of this thing, and maybe partner with him on it, maybe we could get more done with our city.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Believe it or not, I'm not here to cut, well, compensation. I'm Ken Joshua. I'm the president of the Hillsdale Business Association, business over here in Hillsdale. Came to talk for, it'll be the third time now in front of council. Been doing several committee meetings over the last two and a half years about the permit fees and the fees for putting on the light-up parade and summer in the state and the downtown events. The current structure is too much for a nonprofit that collects forty dollars this year for, to be a member, thirty-five dollars for the last twenty-some years. The HBA's been here in Hillsdale almost twenty years, and we have a total of about three thousand dollars in the bank today, which sixteen-hundred of that every year goes towards insurance. The businesses in town, believe it or not, whether you opened a business that you invested twenty thousand dollars or you invested two million dollars, more than likely, it was everything you had. You probably put your house on the line, you probably put all your bank accounts, whatever retirement money, quick money you had, into your business when you opened it. It takes a lot to be able to advertise and to go out and to knock on doors and say, hey, I need to collect a thousand dollars for permits. We're not gonna give any advertising. We're not gonna, we'll talk about you where we can for a couple seconds. But there's no radio, there's a little bit of social media, and that's all we can do, because we have the day for a permit. It's not right. We want to bring these events back to the city. My board took a really big hit last November when it went out on social media that was totally unfair, that we didn't try hard enough, that nobody made an effort. But yet, they come to every meeting. It takes four to five, possibly six meetings to be able to put on the light-up parade alone. It takes an awful lot of time, and these are all volunteers that put their time in to make this happen. And I really hope you'll reconsider and find a way to make this feasible for us to keep it moving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Juan Ward Four. I was one of them that was on the Officers' Compensation Committee. I was fully prepared to give a reasonable raise, because I do know what all of you guys do. And I think it was a horrible insult that was stated, that if you guys got more money, you would do a better job. I think every single one of you guys do your best, pay regardless, to do your best for the citizens of Hillsdale. So I just found that incredibly insulting to you guys, that you would do a better job if you got hand-paid. Like I said, I was prepared to go in and do, like, uh, cost-of-living rates. I do know, you, you spend a lot of time doing your job, but I just couldn't go for the crazy amount. That's why I voted no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Sessions, Ward Three. One oh two, code three circle. I'm speaking in regards to the Berry Street Special Assessment District, or SAD. In the council packet, it looks like a cap of two thousand or three thousand was mentioned to give Berry Street residents a SAD break. I spoke to residents from the Westwood Project, and they agree with me that if that cap, if this cap break is not given to all the taxpayers who are already paying the assessed cap of five thousand, that they consider that to be a discrimination against all of those residents who are already paying the SAD. The residents want either a three thousand dollar credit toward their SAD, or if the cap goes to two thousand, or a two thousand credit towards that SAD, if the cap goes to three thousand. They said that if they already paid the five thousand, then they want any money back. And the ones who are paying ten years wants their credit to their account. Lastly, I'm speaking about the Officers' Compensation Committee salary determination. First of all, Commissioner Proton, you know, at one hour and forty-eight minutes into the April seventh, twenty twenty-five city council meeting, he said he took the first five applicants for the Officers' Compensation Commission. That is not true. He did not take the first five applications. If he would have, then the first application of the applications, and Mr. Ted Jansen should have been on that commission, as he was one of the first five residents to submit their application to be on the commission instead of Mr. Russell Richardson. I am, I am questioning if Mr. Richardson's application to the Officers' Compensation Commission is even legal, since he never actually signed that application and just typed his name on the application. I would ask the city attorney if this was done legally. If, if it is, if it was signed illegally, then I ask the city council to amend the agenda and throw off the salary determination. I would also ask the city council to remove Mr. Richardson off the compensation and put Mr. Jensen on the, on the commission and have a new meeting to determine the compensation. For the record, I am totally against an increase that was recommended by the Officers' Compensation Commission. May, um, let's see. I serve as a city councilman and mayor to serve the people of Hillsdale and to try to make Hillsdale a better place to live for all of, uh, its residents. Like others on city councils have said, I also say that I did not serve the residents of Hillsdale for the money. Again, I'm totally against the increase for the officers, from the Officers' Compensation Committee.
Thank you.
Hello, CJ Congrave, Ward Three. I would like to, first of all, are we having a, um, an opportunity to speak about Berry Street, or is it?
It's a.
Okay. Um, I wasn't sure the way it said open meeting. Okay. Um, so, speaking on Berry Street, two things. I hope we move forward with the project. I also hope that we're able to put a better cap. My thought process on going and going retroactive to people that have previously paid, and I am one of them, that when policies change, you don't go retroactive and go back and fix whatever. You're never gonna move forward in the city if you don't start making changes. And it's going to negatively affect some people in the past, but the goal is to move forward and make it better in the future. So I don't think you should even consider something retroactive or make it stall you from doing something that's going to improve something for the future projects. So, my other thing is, I just want to address that at the last meeting, I was extremely disappointed to hear that the manager blamed, um, some people on council on the retirement of some of the people that have retired, because, why I was so shocked by it is because I remember having a conversation with her when I went to talk to her about the SAD for Berry Street, and she had mentioned at that time, and that was like at least four months ago, that she was already in the process of retiring. So if by asking questions on policies or looking at things are going to cause somebody to quit or be accused of someone quitting, then what are we doing? Okay? I mean, how are we gonna fix this city if we're not willing to question what we're doing now? How do we move forward? You have to be willing to allow people to say, what are the policies and why are we doing it this way? And if you believe that the policies are correct, then stand behind them and explain them. But to just try to shut people up when they're trying to question things, I, I don't understand it at all. Like, when did it become a problem to question? Or to ask for answers? And, um, I, the letter that I sent all of you, that was the other thing that I brought up in the letter that I sent you, is that, is there not a way for us to get to a part where we can actually have a conversation with the committee? Not just get up three minutes and talk, and then you hear what we have to say, and then that's it? Where can we go? Where, how can we set it up where there is gonna be an opportunity where we can speak to the board as a whole and ask questions and get answers? Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I swing scap, Ward One. In reference to what CJ was talking about. You know, that's one thing I, you know, I've been coming here for several years. I've already brought forth, uh, a town hall meeting. You know, that's something that, uh, as councilmen, I haven't seen. There's only two that I, well, one for sure, and she's no longer a councilman now, but CJ will go around and have town hall meetings with her constituents. One thing, you guys, I don't know, because some of you are new, some of you are, you know, been here for a while, some of you probably don't care, uh, because your time's coming up. So, you know, the thing is, we need to be able, just like CJ was saying, a time to be able to talk to you. It's not just coming up here and talking in this mic, but it's time that we are, can have either face-to-face with answers coming back to us. We all have questions, and we can look at the agenda, and we can do this, and we can do that. But the thing is, where is the one-on-one or the ability to talk as humans? That's what this world's having problems with right now. Everything wants to become mechanical and robot this, robot that. Do we have to have a robot council too, that we can't even really talk to as humans? It's time that we turn around and have people, if you're gonna, uh, you want a raise, you want something, let's do something for that. And one way you're gonna do it is be able to talk to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Russell Richardson, Chair of Officers' Compensation Committee. Uh, I want to communicate my disappointment in the way that our discussion was handled, both by members of the board and many off of it. We thought we were presenting something to you guys for us to deliberate on together, uh, work together to find the right approach. Turns out, that was wrong. The three reasons that we had for listing our suggested races were inflation's changed a lot. We want more involvement among the city council in checking things and making sure cities run well. And we wanted to be more accessible to people who aren't retired. Most of you have gray hair up there. I can't afford to take time off my job to do what you're doing. And if we want more young people involved, we need to make this more of a part-time job, which is what you guys do. That was our argument, but we were open to hearing yours. I've lived in the city for about seven years, and only recently I've begun to follow local politics. Last week, I tried to call another meeting of the Compensation Committee. By statute, we were allowed fifteen meetings before submitting a decision, and unprompted, the city manager intervened and asked the attorney to prevent us from meeting again, demanding that our previous decision, which I had not submitted to you, was final. Despite being told otherwise, in the very meeting where we met, it's on, it's on the video record, our, our meeting minutes were interpreted as final. The bylaws of our committee, we've opened the question of revisiting, revisiting this decision that hasn't been final. And that is apparently, the silence of that is apparently the basis for, for maintaining another meeting. Uh, there, there was basis for there. This argument didn't have to be, be made if people were willing to see it. You can send it back to us. We're glad to revisit and take the reasonable feedback into consideration. Last week, it was suggested that the negative culture on this council resulted in the exit of two city staff people. Both of those people have been talking about retiring for years, months, I mean, months now. So to use that as political leverage is shameful. This negative culture was directed primarily at one individual who was accused of rallying people to oppose the raised bonus and severance package last fall. Based on my experience on this committee, I'm beginning to have a different theory about why those people showed up. They're tired of the same old, same old. They're tired of stories of city staff who have been silenced for holding dissenting opinions. They're, they're tired of lawsuits for fences barely over property lines. They're tired of increased property taxes for thee, but not for me, tired of attempts to secure severance package just weeks before an election. And watching this, the, the planned retirement of these two individuals being used as political ammo is, is really shameful, in my own experience from this Officers' Compensation Committee. I, I want to be charitable and give the benefit of the doubt to the city manager, but I wonder about these things. Maybe there's an easy and reasonable explanation, and I would open-mindedly be welcome to hear it. Competence is appreciated, but the people of Hillsdale desire leaders who work for their best interests, which is why I wanted to compensate you in the first place for doing the hard work of representing us. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Jeff Vasquez. First of all, I'd like to say thank you. And the reason I'm saying thank you is I, probably none of you on council even know this showman, but a past councilman once told me, this is probably the most unappreciated job in the world. So thank you for what you do, even though we're here giving you a earful. I would want to talk about the compensation situation. Anything that is probably gonna be voted down, and probably actually go negative on what you're doing in terms of a zero compensation put towards the roads. So we all want our roads. It's interesting, I've been looking at the budget, especially going forward here. And, uh, you know, police, we've got two million plus dollars going forward. We have the fire department getting seven hundred thousand dollars. We have the administration getting seven hundred thousand dollars. That leaves a very little pot to fix a road. Fix our parks. Do anything in our parks. You look at all the different things that are going on, and we're racing to the Titanic. We're, we're just trudging along with a hole that's just driving down. And until serious considerations are made about readjusting everything that we do here in the city, we're gonna continue to have these people complaining and fixing our damn roads. It's never gonna happen until these things are considered. And it's gonna be a tough thing. You're gonna have hundreds of people that come in. You go out in the police, hundreds of people if you come in after the fire. But these things have to be looked at. I mean, we can't continue to have a population decrease, an increase in our expenses in various areas that aren't serving what we're looking for. And, uh, again, police are important, fire are very important. Just hard decisions need to be made. I wish you luck, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Ted Jansen, Ward One. You have a night letter. I'm not coming for each in front of the children and serving you, but you know what you did. You know what you did is wrong. So we apologize to people of Hillsdale, apologize. I just ask you to man up and do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Thank you all. We will move on to the consent agenda. The podium is closed. Okay, on the consent agenda, we have city and BPU claims of April third, payroll of April tenth, city council minutes of April seventh, finance minutes of April seventh, Officers' Compensation Commission minutes of April third, ICO for Hillsdale College commencement, noise variance request for Hillsdale College BPU, water meter purchase BPU, diesel fuel purchase, and the ONG committee minutes of April seventeenth. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion? Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Soha. Katie, could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilperson Burns?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yeah.
Wolfram?
Yeah.
Mayor Protagonio?
Yes.
Seven.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move on to communications petitions. Letter A, we have our Mitchell Research Center's spring newsletter. Always take a look through that. Good stuff, good historical information. Do we have anyone from the Mitchell Research Center here? Okay, well, thank you for that newsletter. Uh, letter B, we have Ted Jansen's letter. Letter C, we have a letter from the Hillsdale Business Association, and we already heard, is there anything else to add on that? Uh, we also were gonna hear from Jason about this issue.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Um, so these both, uh, as, uh, the HBA in their letter, Summer in the City and the Car Show are fifty percent reduced as city-sponsored. Um, approximately, uh, Summer in the City, about nine hundred dollars cost, uh, four hundred and fifty will be built out. Um, that includes labor, uh, vehicle costs, um, twenty-four thousand dollars in barricades. Granted, not all of them want for this event, but I just wanted to throw what we have off of that and put off for all these events. Um, so that one is under the cap of what they requested there of the five hundred dollars. Um, the light-up parade, uh, last time we got a, um, a quote ready for Mary when she was part of the, the light-up parade. Um, it was estimated at about two thousand forty-eight dollars, which they are fifty percent as well, for a cost of a thousand three hundred dollars, approximately.
Okay, so about nine hundred fifty above what they're requesting?
Perfect, yeah, five hundred fifty dollars.
Each?
Well, they, and then your letter said five hundred, for the whole structure too, five hundred dollars, right?
Okay.
If I, if I read that correctly.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Mr. Blake? Yes, Councilman Soha, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Burton. So, um, we addressed this in the Public Services about a year and a half ago or so, and, um, what I thought, and I would appreciate some clarification, maybe City Manager can help you here, is I thought that we had approved the increase and the reduction, and also that council could address each individual and make determinations per individual event, uh, to reduce them even further if possible, or eliminate them altogether. My hope would be that we, as council, would be able to bring, you know, come to a consensus with the HPA, with the other entities that operate downtown, and, and reinvigorate that in the, in the downtown district, so. Am I correct, though, in that, that we could determine on a per basis, a per parade basis?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Anything else? Councilmember Wolfram?
I would just like to, um, agree here that we should, you know, these things add value to the community. Um, and these are nonprofits, and, and they, at a certain extent, add value to the community. So I think that it would be useful that if they come in with, uh, you know, an event that we think has a lot of value, then we should be able to say, okay, we're only gonna charge you X amount, uh, so to look at it individually.
Thank you, Councilman Wolfram. Yes, Councilman Flynn?
On top of that, I'd also like to add that, um, council previous cars worked very hard to establish a downtown, coming out here entertainment district, um, where you can have the alcohol out and wander through town and enjoy.
A social district.
A social district, thank you. But if there's nothing downtown to be social about, it seems kind of silly that we have a social district and nothing to socialize at because our fees are so high that nobody wants to come downtown and want us to be social. So it seems like we shot ourselves in the foot to do one thing and eliminate the reason to do it.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Councilman Soha?
Um, maybe with councils, you know, agreeing that maybe we revisit it and just bring it back to eliminate the fees for these parades altogether, just make it a line item. It was, Jason, is it twelve or twelve thousand, about twelve thousand dollars a year we spend?
Approximately twelve to fifteen. I think it's closer to fifteen last year. Remember, we ran over this, I think it's going on the second year, so the problem are fifteen now.
Well, I know, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, please, that there's language that we're not allowed to give away our services, correct? But if it's for an event that the city determines is able to booster the downtown district, then we can make special determination.
Yeah, it's a little broader, actually, than downtown district. It's things that would be, in effect, to promote the city or that sort of thing, or for recreation purposes. Um, yeah, and if you're going to do that, in effect, almost what you're doing is you're saying your co-stores from this city give up for that purpose, which then allows you to cut the rate because it's seen as the city investing taxpayer money in it, right? To the extent that you don't charge what it actually costs you for monetary services, the city performs in order to enable that event to take place, whether it's police coverage, prepared aid, or whatever.
Thank you, Tom, if I may? Thank you. So I've spoken to Mr. Johnson at length about this. Um, he is invested in our city. He moved in here a number of years ago and has become a very solid fixture, and I really admire and appreciate what you've done, sir. And, um, what I would ask council to consider, and, uh, maybe we could move forward, is consider these events in the downtown district as city-sponsored events in, in totality so that we're not burdening these, um, not-for-profit entities that have a thousand dollars in the bank, um, to put the barricades up. I'd also would, um, like to mention that Mr. Johnson said, when they moved the light-up parade to the fair last year, that his phone was ringing nonstop with people who were upset that the event had moved from the downtown district. And so just want council to be aware of that, and, um, maybe we could, in May, or we could have a public services meeting in the next couple of weeks. And, like a recommendation.
Are you presenting on Thursday?
No.
Uh, you're next?
May first.
May first, okay. Uh, Thursday, May first, discuss the budget for that? Is that okay as a council during that budget work hearing? Uh, I will say, one of the, I'm sorry if you didn't have enough time to read the new, uh, committee rules. I think we should follow the procedure of actually making a, a motion that we're sending it to a certain committee under normal circumstances, just so that it's clear, uh, where this is gonna be discussed next. Um, although the, the Thursday meeting is just a work session, so I think we can just add that to the agenda informally. Um, so would you like to make a motion to send it to Public Services or talk about it at the budget hearing, uh, when Mr. Blake presents?
I think the budget hearing's appropriate.
Okay, yeah, that would have more of the council there. Okay, so we'll talk about it May first. Thank you, appreciate it. Was there anything else on that? Did it mean to cut anyone off? Yep, Councilman Soha?
May I ask, Mr. Johnson, did you have anything to add?
No.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Letter D. Uh, the Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness of Hillsdale County will be holding their annual 5K Run and Walk Color Run on Saturday, March 17th. Registration begins at eight AM at Sandy Beach Park. Anything to add on this item? Wolfram? Thank you. Okay, letter E, we have an update from our county commissioner. Thank you for being here, Commissioner Ingles, good to see you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, uh, council and, uh, Senator Andrew. I have, um, a report that we received at our last Board of Commissioner meeting, it's 2025 Equalization Report. And in this report, um, it's probably thirty pages. One page in particular is very interesting. As I look at the numbers for cities, in the city of Hillsdale, the county equalized value in 2015 was one hundred forty-four million, eight hundred twelve thousand, three hundred dollars. In 2025, city of Hillsdale equalized, equalized value was two hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. So it's hundred, almost double from 2015 to 2025. To compare that, Jonesville in 2025 was ninety-five million, two hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred dollars. And to pick a township, in particular Somerset Township, county equalized value, which is real in personal property. Somerset's value was four hundred seventy-five million, eight hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred eighty dollars. So Somerset Township is very high equalized value, um, in fact, the highest in Hillsdale County. Uh, to compare that, the next county, uh, the next township in the county after the Somerset of four hundred seventy-five million, um, is Cambria Township with an SEV, or CEV of one hundred ninety-three million, eight hundred eighty thousand. So when I look at these equalized values, you know, there's growth in our county, and, um, you know, in particular, in the last ten years, there's been, um, the total in the county in 2015 was one billion, seven hundred eight million, seven hundred six thousand, eight hundred two dollars. And in 2025 of the county was three billion, three hundred five million, six eight, six ninety-five thousand, five ninety-two. So there's been, in the last ten years, tremendous growth in our county. And that concludes my update. Any questions? I think I can answer questions.
Thank you. Council? Wolfram? Yes, Councilman Wolfram?
So basically, what you're saying is that in the last ten years, values have doubled.
Yes.
It looks, in Hillsdale County.
Pretty much press support, that's, uh, a fair statement.
Anything else? Thank you, Commissioner Ingles.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to room number seven, introduction and adoption of ordinances. We have the SAD for Berry Street. Well, does council have any further thoughts on this before we take our vote? Councilman Soha, you weren't here. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I did watch the April 7th meeting, it's almost, um, I did, I did text, have a text exchange with, um, Tim Palau, if I'm pronouncing his last name properly, uh, this afternoon, and asked him if he and the people who wrote the letters were still opposed. And then unfortunately, they said yes, so, um, I'm gonna have to be, you know.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Councilman Flynn?
Did we receive, then, between the last meeting and this meeting, any further, um, notice, notifications from any, any of the property owners on Berry Street other than Ms. Tom Gray, that they were rescinding their?
I believe CJ was the only one. I did have a few people tell me verbally they would support three to four thousand, but, um,
Very happy.
Katie, did you receive any other letters? I assume you would have forwarded them to us. Okay. Yes, Councilman Soha?
I did speak to a resident that lives on Berry Street that was for it this week, but I don't know if he would be willing to be publicly, but I did.
Okay. Yeah, my last thought on this was actually, we, we talked at the ONG committee about just, uh, rescinding the ordinance that created the local officers' compensation commission, and using the twenty thousand dollars in council salaries to bring down the SAD cost, but that would only bring it down, uh, less than a thousand dollars per property. Um, so we could wait and continue to explore further funding options or just take the vote now. Councilman Morrissey?
I think we should take the vote now and put this to rest. Uh, we've had, uh, we've, we've offered this to a number of neighborhoods over the years. There have been this one and a previous one, we're the only ones who refused it. I think it should just be, uh, oh, because government, by the consent of the government, they don't want it. They don't want the, uh, special assessment. That should be it.
Thank you, Councilman Morrissey. Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion, sure.
Okay. Well, motion to approve or reject?
Reject.
Motion to reject. Support. Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey to reject the Berry Street SAD, seconded by Councilman Stucho. Katie, so this is a motion to reject. Yes, further discussion, Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor Burton. Just to clarify, a yes vote means we are not in favor of it.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, Councilperson Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stucho?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Protempalino?
Yes.
And Councilperson Robbins?
Yes.
Thank you, Katie. We don't have any old business, we will move on to new business. We have a traffic control order. Uh, let's see, Chief, would you like to discuss this? Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Towards the beginning of the year, the Public Safety Committee convened, um, it was brought to my attention again regarding Walton Street, the block specifically between Southwest Creek and South Manning, with parking on the south side of the road. It's generally not used, however, the north side is. There's a double yellow line, but to pass the parked cars, you have to cross the center line and go across the double yellow line if you're going westbound. You would have to on either side if those cars park. Um, we did a parking study, if you will. I had officers on each shift monitor that for almost a month. Um, I went and checked it several times a day. I had officers on the night shift look at it, and during that whole period, none of our officers ever observed a vehicle parked on the south side of the street in that block, um, nor did I. At that time, Jason from the Street Department and I communicated, who stated they could get assigned and restripped if we got a traffic control order in place. Uh, we decided to draft a letter, Jason drafted that, and it was delivered to all the houses on that block, um, regarding what we were considering, which would be no parking at any time on the south side of that block. That way the double, uh, plain by line could be moved to the south to allow two-way to traffic, unstructured, uh, going by parked vehicles on the north side. We gave them a whole month to contact myself if anybody had any questions or disagreed with that. I received no communications, no contacts from anybody. I went and made personal contact with Director of Legal Funeral Homes, figuring they may have an effect from this. Um, they absolutely did not appreciate it in their personal context, stated that on occasions, they do leave the alley and go on to Walton Street. Um, they felt there would be no impact to their business whatsoever by prohibiting possibly that four parking spaces that may be used by them, um, or people coming, and, um, thought it was a good idea. So visually looking, the very next block to the east on Walton Street visually looks to be about six feet wider. And there's parking on both sides, and we hit, there's no traffic issue here. Uh, Jason from the Street Department actually took a measurement of curb-to-curb on those two blocks. Um, the block that we're talking about tonight is six and a half feet narrower where the street is. Um, and that we still allow parking on both sides of the street. So that is not wide enough, it is classified as a, what's it classified as?
No, excuse me.
Um, as that classification, it does not meet criteria for being wide enough for two-way, two-way traffic and parking on both sides. So from a public safety standpoint, um, and us doing our due diligence of our study and contacting communication with the area, receiving no negative feedback, um, I prepared a traffic control order, which says there shall be no parking on the south side of Walton Street between Southwest Street and South Manning Street at any time. And this would be, would revise a traffic control order issued in 2017, which when, uh, center city apartments were built in that parking lot, in that alley that goes one-way and drops out onto Walton Street, we had to make the south side no parking fifty feet on each side of the alley, just so garbage trucks, plugg trucks could get out of the alley and make a turn whichever direction they had to go. So there's already a hundred feet in the center of the block that we don't allow parking. And the rest of it on each side of that is not being utilized, so. So, uh, the traffic control order is in front of you to vote. Um, it is our recommendation from a public safety standpoint, a legitimate one, uh, that we program the parking on the south side of Walton Street. the parking on the south side of Waldron Street to the last end.
Thank you. Thank you for exploring this. Thank you for the officers. Thank you, Jason. Everyone for looking into this and getting a stance around it. Appreciate it. Any questions, comments? Yes, Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I missed the meeting and then I can't stop talking, so, but thank you, Chief. I did just want to bring to council's comment, a friend of mine lives on the corner there in the Old Rose Corner Inn, and he suggested to alleviate the traffic. Because Waldron is used as a pass-through because of the one-ways, that we might consider restriping the one-ways and making them two-ways again. I know that's a tall order, and, but I just wanted to mention that to council. I know I didn't do anything in writing, but he did say that privately too.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Anything else? Okay. Do I have a motion to, oh, Councilman Flynn's on the net?
No, I was just going to make the motion.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Soha, to approve the traffic control order for Waldron Street between Southwest and South Manning Streets. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. We will move on to letter B, approval for social district permit for St. Joe's Cafe. Hi, Sam.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Proton and counsel. About two weeks ago, I had an opportunity to talk to Joshua Mizio, who's the owner of St. Joe's Cafe. He's up here by City Hall, and he was interested in applying for a social district permit for his restaurant. One of the things he wants to do is take advantage of the Hillsdale Foodie Walks, which happen once a month during the summer. We already have a couple other restaurants, Hillsdale Brewing Company in here, Stew Public Grub, and they participate, and they have their social district permit. So he was interested in doing the same thing. In order to apply to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to get that permit, we have to, the local government has to basically out a resolution recommending that they go ahead and issue the permit. So you can see there is a form, resolution included in the packet, and if that's approved, then city staff will go ahead and submit that on his behalf, and he can continue the application process, which is all done through the Michigan Liquor Control Commission from this point on.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, two forty-seven. Have a good night. Okay. So we're just adding them into the social districts, giving them a permit. Any questions? Councilman Flynn?
Just a quick question and clarification, because the Dawn is already in the social district, correct? And then Public Grub is already in there. So the businesses actually have to apply to be in the social district that doesn't just say from here to here and includes everybody within that area?
Yeah, so the, the way the state wrote the law to set up social districts, it requires the city to first establish a social district. That's what we have in place, where we draw the boundary around the downtown area, and our boundary is roughly commensurate with the Tifa district. And then for a restaurant to go ahead and participate, they have to be a qualified applicant, which means they have a certain type of liquor license. So in this case, St. Joe's Pizza, they have a Class C retail license as well as an on-premise license. Both of those qualify to allow them to apply. So the way the state law works is the first step is they go to that local government unit, they get a recommendation in the form of a resolution, they take that back to the state, they have to pay a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar permit application to the state, and they have to go through an inspection process, similar to what they would do to get the liquor license to begin with. Once they have that completed, then they are qualified, a qualified business in the social district, and there are certain rules about what kind of beverages they can serve, the type of container it's in. And again, all that is governed by the state statute that allows for these in the first place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Seconded.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Morrissey to approve the resolution for St. Joe's Pizza to apply for a social district permit. Katie, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Counselperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
StuJel?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Calagno?
Yes.
Counselperson Brown?
Yes.
And Flynn?
Yes.
Seven zero approved, resolution three-six-three-four.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Sam. Appreciate it. Okay. Resolution of support for industrial drive, transportation economic development fund grant. Sam, would you like to speak on this too? Thank you.
Yeah, so the city of Full Sail, we are seeking funding to do a resurfacing project on industrial drive. Every year, we have an opportunity to apply for a grant through the Michigan Department of Transportation. They have a couple different categories of grants. One of the ones that we are eligible for as a city with under, population of under ten thousand is the category F. So it's their transportation economic development fund, and it's designed to support projects that are going to have an economic development impact on the community. So we selected industrial drive because of the condition of that street, as well as its importance to the industrial park, receives a tremendous volume of commercial truck traffic, it's utilized by a lot of our employers there, and it's also a connector to basically connect Carlton Road to Mechanic, which is listed as an all-season road by the state. So that's another point in favor of selecting that project. So we would like to submit a grant application for that. What we're asking from council tonight is to adopt a resolution declaring support for the project. We're also in the process of soliciting a number of letters of support from the businesses that would benefit from this. We're going to take all of that and put that in our application and submit it to the state. These applications are due November eighth first.
Thank you. Were any other projects considered under the grant?
So we, we had discussed, last year, we had looked at Woolcot Street. We actually had applied for this grant specifically for Woolcot due to the presence of Bob Evans there. Now, we weren't successful in getting funds for that. One of the challenges is that we couldn't, couldn't really make a convincing argument that that was going to be a connector in terms of facilitating connection points between all-season routes, and it has to do with the way the streets were classified. So even though we put forth our best effort, that just wasn't a great candidate project. So moving forward, we're going ahead, and industrial is a much better candidate. We feel there's a significantly higher chance that will be considered for funding for this project.
Thank you. You said that there's an opportunity to apply. Is this, like, one grant in a, in a basket of grants that we could possibly apply for? Does this prohibit us from other types of grants?
So there, there are two grants that we typically apply for each year through the Michigan Department of Transportation. That's a category F and then the category B grant. So those are the two where we're eligible because of our population size and what types of projects there are.
And we'll submit under category B as well?
I believe we have submitted. That's, Kristen was involved with, you know, helping with a number of these things, and so Jason and I are kind of taking this now, but I believe in past years, we have applied for category B as well.
And we're correct, we're, I should, we're going to lean on the next week or two to look at a bunch of street. We're looking at possible neighborhoods around there.
Okay, is this...
More of a local street.
Local street?
Yep.
Okay, so we're, we're not excluding local streets by picking an industrial street? Great, thank you, I appreciate that. Counselman Flynn?
Two quick questions, then. Do we know how much the grant would be for?
So there's a, well, it depends on the project cost. We could, we could obtain the numbers. I think we have a rough estimate for industrial. I don't know off the top of my head right now if we could get that for you. So the grant requires a twenty percent match.
That was going to be the next question. Would the grant cover how much of the project? So eighty percent?
Yeah, if, unless, you know, if, if we were to apply, we could, you know, do a higher match amount. In fact, the higher your match amount is, typically the better chances you have of getting funding. But yeah, the twenty percent is a limit of match, and then they would cover the rest if they award us funding.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a plan to split the twenty percent portion between the city's road funds and SAD?
I don't know the answer to that at this time. We're, we're still in early stages of looking at these projects, so.
Thank you. Counselman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I believe we've done grants before, and they have been also set special assessment districts.
Thank you. Mr. Mackey, anything to add on that?
No, I'm just thankful that Councilman Soha mentioned that we'll look at it, and if they don't specifically preclude us from doing special assessments, that would be our approach.
Okay. What, is this the same grant as Arch Avenue?
No, so Arch Avenue, that wasn't actually a grant program, that was an appropriations request, I saw this. So that was in here, Mark.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Soha. Let's see. Katie, could I roll call vote?
Yes, Counselperson Soha?
Yes.
StuJel?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Calagno?
Yes.
Counselperson Beckley?
I'm here.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry.
Ouch.
Yes.
And Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey, sorry, it's too long there. That's seven zero, it's approved, guys.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Sam. Okay, we have to set a public hearing for an MEDC. Oh, Sam's up here again. Okay.
Thank you again, Mayor Proton. Just very briefly, to recap for you all, back in 2022, we obtained a grant through the Michigan Strategic Fund, which is a community development block grant, and it allowed the city to undertake a project which we completed last year, which involved the replacement of seventy-five inline shaw valves in our water main system. It also allowed us to go ahead and line about one-point-four miles of sanitary sewer in the city. So we are now wrapped up with that project. We're working on closing out this particular grant. As part of the closeout process, the MEDC does require the city to set a public hearing. It's just to allow anybody to comment on the project after it's concluded. So it's just a formality that we need to go through, basically, in order to complete the closeout documentation and get this finished.
Thank you, Sam. Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion to set a public hearing for May fifth, 2025, at 7:00 P.M.?
Soon.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. Jason, from Penetrating Radar Purchase, we are on letter E, if you are following along.
Thank you. This past December, council voted to enter to the agreement with the Community Foundation to purchase one ground grid radar to be used at our big, you know, road cemeteries in addition to underground survey work within the city. We solicited three quotes for this project, or, for this purchase. The first one is from Guideline Geo with a amount of twenty-three-five-hundred, Power Tel, twenty-three-thousand-one-hundred, and Alcatel, Ant Leter for twenty-six-thousand-one-hundred. I will load on there, on the memo, Guideline Geo, the training is free, they just have a line item there for their travel, a thousand dollars included in the quote. Power Tel was fifteen-hundred dollars for the training, and travel and lodging is additional, and no costs were put on there. When we talked with them, it is an entire, a sense of material there, same thing with the third one. So that recommendation, we did get the Community Foundation, we received their funds of twenty-four-thousand dollars. With that, I would ask to purchase, to, council to award this, purchase to Guideline Geo in a amount of twenty-five-thousand, five hundred and three dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Any comments or questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase for Guideline Geo?
Seconded.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha to approve the purchase from Guideline Geo in the amount of twenty-three-thousand-five-hundred, seconded by Councilman Brown. Roll call vote, Katie?
Yes, Counselperson. StuJel?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Calagno?
Yes.
Counselor Member Brown?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
And Soha?
Yes.
Seven zero approved.
Thank you, Katie. We will move on to letter I, approval for city street decertification.
Thank you. So every year, we do a, what's that called, an Act 51 report for state certification or major in local street fund, or system. Depending on our major and local classification, that's how much money we get out from the gas tax Act 51. While doing the Act 51 2024 report right now, or as we were doing with MDOT, we did find that we have a couple streets that do not qualify as Act 51. What we'll see first is Winona Drive. Winona Drive was planned years and years before our time, so we've been receiving money for that for a long time for a road that isn't exist, is not open for traffic. So as part of the formality, we need to decertify it from our Act 51 report so I can send this back to the state. The second part of this is Mechanic between Bar and Industrial. That has been getting double certified from the city and the county for, I don't know how long, at least since 2004. I found a letter from previous directors. That is a border street between the city and the county. The county has that jurisdiction. We have a couple others, like Barber Drive, we have a border street, they go along Half and Lake Road. We have, oh, Spring Street, that's on Bar Street from Fay to Spring. It's just a border lane that we, that's not ours. So that means that I would ask just to approve the resolution as presented.
Okay. So we've been receiving several funding, the county and the city?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments on this side of Councilman Flynn?
Does this, what we're going to be going at, does this also include Hillcrest? You didn't mention Hillcrest.
Yes, I'm so sorry. Yes, so, well, the four-hundred-and-forty, eight-hundred-and-fifty feet of Hillcrest?
Yes.
Is, as part of that Winona as well?
Okay, just wanted to...
Thank you.
Do you have an idea of how much this will change your funding?
Yes. So it'll take my major funds down fifty-five-hundred dollars and locals, about eighteen-hundred, so fifty-five for major, eighteen-hundred.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for being on top of this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Soho.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Soha. Voice vote, fine on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Okay. We will move on to letter G, airport parking lot bid award. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. So first, I want to introduce the airport manager, Travis Stapleton, to come up and say a few words about himself and introduce himself to the council. And then I also have Alex Dehan, an artist and a H engineer, who will be helping answer these questions in the next two hours. Travis?
Hello, name's Travis Stapleton, born and raised in...
Excuse me, could you hit that button there?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Here you go. Name's Travis Stapleton, born and raised in Hillsdale. Been in aviation my entire life. Worked at the airport as my first job around thirteen years old, to pay for flight lessons. From there, went to college, obtained a bachelor's degree in aviation management, the minor in business. At that point, I went into the airport consulting field, working on master planning and airport design. I'd worked for one-twenty-one air carriers, and also owned and operated a nationwide survey company for twenty years. And just have deep ties to the Hillsdale Airport, and wanted to step in and give it my best to help out.
Thank you for taking over for us. Appreciate it. Could you speak on continuity of services management? Do you foresee any changes at the airport?
So that's something I want to dig into a little bit deeper. It's a time, I'm pretty fresh in the position at this moment. I'd like to dig into the budget and kind of get a feel for what the SAD's goal is with the airport. I assume that is to reduce taxpayer money supporting the operation of the airport. With that in mind, would be a reduction to, to reduce wages up there, so we wouldn't have someone there full-time.
Do you have a sense yet, maybe you're too early, of how that would affect our total income from the airport?
So I don't believe it would, because anyone that's operating into around the airport can call and arrange services. So that either major change would just let us know you're coming, and the service level would remain the same. My concern is, if we had one operation a day, we don't need to pay someone for a hour just to sit there for a mile of the work. So that's where I'm looking at that number, because I have to work the works of year. When things are slow, I don't think we should use that money.
I see. Do you foresee any difficulty in, in that transition of getting people to, uh, notify the airport ahead of time? Or are most people a- aware that that's necessary?
That's quite a common practice.
Okay.
Throughout the country. Um, and typically, they will call with advance notice anyway. So I don't foresee any challenges with the process changing.
Okay.
I think it'll be pretty much the same. It's just those that might land without notice will have slight delay in service if we don't happen to be there. During the mowing season, which is quite intense out there, we'll have those that are known and trained to operate the fuel truck, and they can provide services for those that land without notice.
I see. Okay, so they'll just come in and provide that?
Exactly.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for, uh, coming on board for us. We appreciate it. Any, uh, comments or questions from the council? Yes, Councilman Flynn?
Do you foresee in the future possibly bringing in, like, a business that can be housed at the airport? Like you said, you were for twenty years, you know, the, the surveying company. Can you foresee in the near future, maybe five years from now, having somebody that does things like that based out of Hillsdale?
Uh, yeah, that's part of my plan, is to pursue a business of that type, where you have a charter business, they have a one thirty-five operator. Someone that even fill any open space that we have that can generate revenue. So I'll be reaching out to contacts I have for my career to see if they want to do a basin in Michigan. It's a good location for an operation like that. So I think there's potential for that. We also have limited facilities at the moment, so it depends on what their demand is.
Okay, thank you.
Do you foresee the repair of those facilities, particularly the hangars going forward?
I, I do not. I don't feel that's money well spent at the moment. I think we can make necessary repairs for much cheaper than they're planning on.
Okay.
So like, my, my opinion would be to pause that project and then expense it this time.
Okay.
I really want to pause everything and then slow down a little bit, look at the budget, dig into a bit of finance and see where we can make some cuts to try to get that going, any taxpayer money going to the airport.
Thank you. And you're still, um, are you operating your business there too?
No.
Okay.
I've never, I, well, okay, so, not my survey company, but it is based in Jackson. I did open the, the flight school in Hillsdale. We're currently not operating in Hillsdale, we're operating in Jackson. We do plan on bringing an airplane back down to Hillsdale to offer, uh, flight school opportunities.
Okay. So you're not renting from the terminal anymore?
I do have an office in the terminal, and I do run two T hangar, T hangar spaces at the airport.
Okay.
Yeah. But we are active down there. We bring an airplane down, we give away a couple of airplane rides. We've done some more, a little software control, and that can be more with the local community too.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions? Councilman Soha?
Um, so, thank you again. Welcome. Um, so didn't we approve the money and allocate the money to repair the hangars?
Yes.
And so what happens to that?
Um, it's not going to, to be spent unless there's expenditures on the particular hangars. But the T hangar yours is what he's referring to primarily, so that just won't be spent, so it's.
So the allocation will remain of the, was it ninety thousand dollars?
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five, and, um, is there any way to call some of that back?
It, it is a fallback situation. It's just not being spent.
It's just not being spent.
Um, there are some hanging doorwork that needs to be done, um, particularly the one-hanger, the, the corporate line hanger. But, uh, the doors are the line share for that, it just will not be spent.
Until Travis gets his ducks in a row and.
Yeah.
And will that be re- represented to us? Or will you just be able to move forward?
Um, it will be, it will, it will be represented if, uh, depending on what that pri- plan is moving forward.
I, I would appreciate at least an appraisal when you have the plan moving forward.
So we, uh, I believe it was last council meeting, we approved the budget resolution, moving the hundred and five thousand. So probably at some point, we're going to move a percentage of that money back, depending on what track these dates for the repairs.
That money is in the capital improvement, airport capital improvement budget, so it's basically, you just earmarked it within the budget. So it just won't, uh, won't.
That'll just be part of the general, or the, the airport fund balance from now on?
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, now on to the parking lot. So as far as the.
I just have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
Can you give a copy of your bio in case someone like constituents asking about what's going on at the airport? And I'll say, oh yeah, we got a new manager, um, so I can say.
Are you sure of that? Doesn't matter if that works or not?
Yeah, if you just send me your resume, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For all this, I guess?
I can forward it to all of you.
Okay, so, yeah, I need you.
Katie, could you maybe include that in the packet, in the section too, if anyone wants to check that out? Okay. Anything else before we move on to the, uh, agenda here? Okay, so we have the money for the parking lot through a grant, but we haven't actually received it yet, correct?
Yes, so Alex, if you don't mind coming up. So, um, we put, the, the parking lot is actually, um, separate from the terminal itself, and we did that to capitalize on funding sources. So, um, as it states in here, our total project cost is about three hundred eighty-eight thousand eight eighty-four oh two. Um, three hundred and eleven thousand of that is for the actual hard construction cost, and seventy-seven thousand is for engineering, uh, services with R S and H. So this, this particular item is twofold. One, awarding, um, the contract to the low bidder, Big Red Team, um, deep ways trucking and excavating, and, um, and then the second part of this particular component is, um, we are requesting that state council approve paying for this project out of capital reserves in the general fund in the short term, so this work can be done and we can pay it before the, uh, September flying in. And then it's anticipated that, and Alex can talk about this, that, um, in September, um, we will also be able to apply for full reimbursement for this project. So Alex, can you talk about that?
Yeah.
And your recommendation?
Of course, yes. Mr. Mackey, thank you for having me, and, uh, Mayor Proton, for having me as well. We get Alex Dehan, as our assistant, we've been doing interior work for the airport, uh, for over a decade now. Um, so, Mr. Mackey's correct, there is an ongoing terminal project, as many of you know, out there at the airport. Uh, that was funded as part of a completely separate grant, uh, in which case the city got two and a half million dollars to fund that project with the rest being local. This project that we're talking about today, the parking lot project, is in association with that project. So if we were to stop construction at the end of this job we had going on, there would be no parking, uh, pot. So the parking lot project that we are, uh, bringing forth tonight, uh, is funded separately, uh, through a, a, by partisan infrastructure law, AIG, grant. Uh, that grant is a hundred percent funded by the F.A. and the state, so there's no local matches part of this grant. The problem is that money is not going to be allocated to the city until September of this year. That's a disservice, I guess, in my humble opinion, uh, for almost every airport, uh, in the nation, uh, because of the S, FAA fiscal year runs from October to September of every year. Uh, you don't get the next few years of funding until September of the previous year. So it's kind of a disservice, but the city does have an option to front-load that cost until the money's become available in September for the city to start drawing down the funds from that grant after it is awarded. That's actually the, the gist of it.
Thank you. Councilman Flynn?
Is the money guaranteed? As in, if we paid for it, agreed to it tonight, we paid for it, Mr. Mackey's wording was, we'd have to apply to get the money back. Is there a chance that we wouldn't get the money back? Or is this just a paperwork thing we have to go through? And you can tell, you say tonight that it is a hundred percent guaranteed, then we will get the three hundred and whatever thousand dollars back, so it doesn't cost us a dime?
I will tell you what the F.A. would tell me, and they would say, no money is ever guaranteed. Um, but it is money that is allocated to the city. So this money is already in the F.A.'s hands. They just have not get, given it to the city or to any sponsor, uh, this year, because they are still working through the grant application process. So the grant application was actually submitted, uh, at the end of February, uh, which they have about ninety to a hundred and twenty days to review themselves before they were to allocate the money to.
Is there a chance now that somebody, somewhere in a really big chair, could sign an executive order cutting the F.A.'s budget, and then all of a sudden, we're screwed?
There is the possibility.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wolfram, do you?
No.
Okay.
Um, and just to add to that, um, we have been in this position before, where we have advanced, um, funds for particular projects, and then reimbursed. Sometimes, as Alex indicated, we're, we're kind of put in that position to, um, get something done at a more prudent time.
Understandable. I'm just that kind of guy that, you know, oh, we promised we'll pay you that. And, you know, it's like Wimpy from Popeye, I'll pay you next Tuesday, and then, you know, something goes up, and all of a sudden, all those people out there are yelling at us that we spent three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the federal government didn't follow through.
Well, absolutely, um, um, but also, you know, when you look at the timing of this one, um, we can wait till September, till it's formally, uh, awarded, or, or, um, but then we're probably looking at construction next year.
Right.
So we have this big, beautiful terminal.
No, I, I understand. I just.
That's just a, I'm just giving you that.
Sure, okay.
Kind of the honest.
Okay, thank you.
So the process that we're talking about is called, is called seeking reimbursement from the F.A. This is not new. Many, many airport owners, uh, do this all the time, uh, because of the delay in the funding through September. But like Mr. Mackey was just mentioning, the September ten from receiving the money isn't necessarily conducive for construction, because you get those fall rains, and you're not able to necessarily get on the segment started quick enough to complete the job before, uh, the winter ends.
Do you know how long this job will take, then, once you get started?
The, the construction duration is estimated at thirty days.
Oh, okay.
Travis, do you have anything about this?
Uh, I think I'm on board with the current plan.
Okay.
To get it done.
You have any experience with this sort of reimbursement?
Yeah, I've worked on airport projects for many years, and it's, it works out just fine.
Okay. Thank you, Travis. Councilman Soha?
Just two points. Typically, when the government airworks or allocates money for something that it, it's in a pot, like Mr. Mackey said about our money for the airport, and it can't be spent otherwise, because it's already determined for that. Um, but my question is, we had a terrible conflagration of events a couple of years ago, where it was freezing, and the ground was frozen, and then we had a torrential downpour in February, and the water ran off down into a neighborhood that's outside of the city limits and flooded a couple of basements. Um, nothing, to my knowledge, has been done with drainage commission or at the county level, um, to alleviate that. Um, we've, at the city, as far as I know, had did all of our due diligence to make sure the water, this was just a special circumstance and a crazy weather event. But my question is, I, I don't, I can't tell about these plans. Um, is there a contingency for water runoff, so that neighborhood is spared?
Yeah, I think I know where you're headed. So both the terminal building project, the vertical project and the parking lot project have a combined, uh, detention basin for that site, uh, that will receive all the runoff from these two improved sites before it's ultimately discharged into the storm network. Yes. So there is a, there is a detention pond onsite proposed as part of this project that will receive the stormwater runoff from both of these sites moving forward, yes.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, sorry. Thank you, Councilman Soha. Councilman Bruns?
If I recall, Councilman Soha, um, this is gone before the planning commission already, and I think approved. I could be wrong about that, but, uh, uh, for my part, I'm, uh, I'd rather play a conservative, but I can see both sides here still.
Councilman Flynn?
Just one other question on the drainage, because, um, talking about the situation Mr. Soha was talking about, uh, a lot of that water that ran off came down Milne Road Hill, um, and across State Road, and then into that area and then into that neighborhood. So does your retention pond or project also include excess water coming from outside the terminal and outside the parking lot?
The detention bond pond proposed as part of this project would not account for that. It is just for the improvement of this site, yes.
Is there a way that in your construction of the entire project, you can maybe keep some of that water that could potentially run down the hill and cross State Road from entering that area?
Yep. Since this is a federal grant, all of that would have to be reviewed by, uh, the Michigan Department of Transportation and the F.A.A. And if they wouldn't deem that as part, an applicable part of this project, they would not give you, the city, the money to necessarily make those improvements, but it's something that we could talk about, um, offline if, if you'd wish.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Soha?
Would that be right as a project, and then, or would that just be something?
No, 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 there would, there would be no, I mean, this project would continue regardless. I mean, it's, it's been permitted, it's been reviewed by, uh, the environmental staff at the F.A. and M.D.A. both. Um, it would be a standalone project in, in that regard.
So additional retention would be an additional project?
Correct.
And it's possible to get funding for that if we?
Uh, we might have to wordsmith it a little differently, but yes, we, we, we might be able to look that out, yes.
Would I ask you, uh, would it be appropriate to ask you to just look into that a little bit, Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council or staff? Okay, uh, let's do, yeah, let's do two separate motions. Uh, so I will accept a motion to award the parking lot construction to Big Red Team LLC, uh, in the amount of three hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and two cents. Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. Any further discussion? Councilman Flynn?
Just a technical question, so it doesn't come back to bite anybody. Uh, in R S and H's letter, and I know it's probably just a misstatement, this is Big Red Team, is it a Big Red Team? I didn't know if a typographical error could snag something, or if that's no big deal.
Nope, that's already, that letter's already been accepted by the F.A.
Oh, okay then. Just in line with the thing that they were two separate.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Any further discussion? Katie, could I roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilperson Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Galavino?
Yes.
Councilperson Bruns?
No.
Councilperson Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuchel?
Yeah.
Six one, that's approved.
Thank you, Katie. Um, should we do the engineering here? That's under a different item technically, isn't it?
Yeah, I didn't separate that.
So we'll do that. Okay, no problem. Okay, so our second motion under this letter is to approve the use of the capital reserve funds to pay for the project with subsequent reimbursement from M.D.A. Arrow. Do I have a motion? Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Stuchel. Katie, could I roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilperson, Mayor Proton Galavino?
Yes.
Uh, Councilperson Bruns?
No.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuchel?
Yeah.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Six one, approved.
Thank you, Katie. We will move on to letter H, same, same question here, but the engineering portion. Do I have a motion to approve R S and H's airport parking lot construction engineering contract for seventy-seven thousand one hundred sixty-four, and to authorize the city manager to approve the contract on the city's behalf? Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Soha. Katie, could I roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bruns?
No.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuchel?
Yeah.
Wolfram?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Galavino?
Yes.
All right, that's six one, that's approved.
Thank you, Katie. We will move on to letter I, Officers' Compensation Commission Salary Determination. Okay, we have a resolution here to reject the determination. Um, do I have a motion, or is there any discussion?
I make a motion that we reject the officers' compensation commission salary determination.
Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. Councilman Soha?
Just, yes means no.
Yes means no.
Yes, yes means no. Okay, so we are voting yes to approve the resolution. The resolution rejects the determination. Katie, could I roll call vote?
Yes, Councilperson Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuchel?
Yeah.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Galavino?
Yes.
Councilperson Bruns?
Yes.
All right, that's seven zero, approved to reject.
Approved to reject. Thank you, Katie. Appreciate it. We didn't have any miscellaneous reports. I will open the podium for general public comment. You may speak on whatever you wish. You have three minutes. The podium is open. You may speak on whatever you wish. You have three minutes. The podium is open.
Hi, I'm Karen Knight, just to introduce myself. I'm Kathy Kellerman, and I will be running for mayor. I've been a resident of the city of Hillsdale for, in November, it will be 25 years. I live and worship in the city. I have no political agenda. I just would like to be a voice for the people, the city of Hillsdale. Thank you.
Thank you for meeting, Kathy. Any further, yes?
I've addressed a couple of different oddities regarding the flag placement and haven't got any response. I'm a little disappointed in the city overall to the respect that, as many servicemen as we have and as much knowledge as we have on this council, that you let these flags be as they are for months. They're simply not placed right, they're not up to flag code. I expect probably tomorrow in the city and at the fire department and other places, flags have lowered half mast if they're aware of the Pope died and President Trump issued an executive order to lower the flags. So, it wasn't done today, it should have been done today. But if you're not aware of that, I'm not Catholic, I'm not particularly fond of the Pope that we had there, but he is the world renowned leader. So, that, if any of you follow my channel, you know, our community, they were sadly deficient in lowering the flags for President Jimmy Carter, who would be another political figure that I wasn't overly fond of, but he was our president. So, anyway, let's get our flags ready in here, please.
Thank you.
Thanks, Juan, for the word for. Just responding to Mr. Richardson's insinuation that Mr. Mackey falsely said that Kristen, the city engineer, and Ginger quit, they were going to retire. That's not the case from what my knowledge is, and it's not what was in their letter. Their letter was, because of all the drama and backstabbing and things, and I just reposted those letters so the public know what is actually happening here. I mean, this disinformation that they say I'm doing, they haven't said it, but I'm the social media person. I put the video out, I put documentation back there. So, they can spin it all they want, but facts are the facts. Thank you. Thank you.
Joseph Hedy, 181 Rees Street, Proton Mayor, it's very disheartening, disheartening to hear that he will not be running for mayor. Wanted to say thank you and this resident will truly miss you. I think you've been one of the most transparent mayors we've ever had. I love the discussion and thought you bring to this position. You will be sadly missed. There are also concerns that have emerged regarding Andrew Gelsers, Andrew Gelsner, his ticket chair as a public official who appears to be operating under LLC. We have government enriching themselves financially and trying to hide their identity through this LLC for a $225,000 rep credit. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Chad, here on Ward Three, live over on Ripon Avenue. I was here during the last meeting. And I'm here to tell you I am going to be here more often. I know I'm very young considering hosting you gentlemen on this council and knowing that the budget sessions are coming up. I, as a young guy, really, really asked you guys to, you know, follow the gentleman from earlier that was saying, you know, there's not a whole lot of money and maybe we need to make some cuts to please take that into consideration. And then, in addition to that, you know, to the budget cuts and whatnot that, you know, other citizens are looking for, I'm obviously for that as well. Because again, it's not about us in this room right now, it's about my kids. It's about their kids and what Hillsdale's going to be 50 years from now. You know, and what we're doing right now is not benefiting my kids because they're going to graduate in five, six, seven years, and there's nothing for them here. You know, and the way the money is being spent, you know, I've been looking at some of the reports that have been published. And, I mean, we're spending, what, a million dollars every month just in equipment? And regular office expenses? That seems awfully like a lot of money. And during my day job, I help run a $40 million business. And we don't nearly spend that kind of money. I know there's a lot more people here and a lot more things to take care of. But it just seems like there's no accountability to where any of this money is going. Because the way I see it, as a young guy, is we have a city manager that calls all the shots and the council can't do anything about it. To me, that's wrong. And again, I'm new into politics and trying to figure out what is really going on. But to me, you know, coming here during the last meeting and seeing the city accountant and the tax assessor just willingly throw numbers out there and I'm being like, oh, I'm going to get that trigger later. If I were to do that to my boss, I would be fired on the spot if I couldn't give you guys what you're asking for, you know, if you guys were my employer. And the way I look at it, Mr. Mackey, these guys right here that the city voted in are your employer and I would really think that you would listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Hello again. I just want to reiterate what the gentleman said. Gosh, I'm extremely disappointed that you're not running. Since you've been on the council, and I hope that means you're moving back to your seat and not going anywhere, I've learned more because of your willingness to question and your willingness to research. And I hope that, I can't blame you with what you've been going through and what you've been accused of. But I really hope that you consider somewhere down the road, maybe when life's a little bit less crazy, to run because I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Thank you all. We'll close the podium. We will move on to the city manager's report. Thank you, Mr. Mackey. We'll move on to council comment. The only thing I wanted to ask, which we didn't add to the agenda, I wonder if the, oh, our firemen just left? I was wondering if we could get a report on this house because on West Street, if we know what the cause is, if there's any action the city could take to prevent such thing. It's pretty unusual to have two house fires within...
Three.
Three, yeah. Within, what, three or four months of each other, yeah. Councilman Flynn?
I did happen to ask a couple of the firefighters, I did not get a chance to ask the chiefs this, but I did ask a couple of firefighters that same question, saying it seemed kind of odd. And all of them were, there was no nefariousness, I guess, lack of a better word. The most recent one, from what I understand, the resident had an illegal burn going on in their backyard and the wind kicked up and blew the embers into the house, causing the house fire. The one actually on the corner itself, one that burned before that, they think was electrical in nature. Just older homes that, you know, just weren't, I don't want to blame anybody, but, you know, not as kept up as you want to be, maybe still not up to electricity instead of newer, up-to-code stuff. The first one, I did not know, but they said there was no nefariousness, no, it just was one of these weird things that different circumstances in that neighborhood just led to those fires.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Yeah, one in the corner of Weston Bacon, this real loss, beautiful home. Mr. Mackey, do you know if the city has borne any costs related to those or will?
Just, just the cost of our, you know, firefighting that went there. Typically, those homes were insured, so then we received actually a portion of the insurance proceeds to hold until the insurance company deems that, you know, they've been taken down properly and such. So, so no out-of-the-order there at cost.
Okay. And the one that's a little bit south, south of Bacon on West Street, is that going to be a total care bound as well? Do we know?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Any other council comment? Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I also want to announce that today I submitted my signatures and I am running for mayor in the interim slot after long deliberation and thought. And talking with my wife to ensure it was a sustainable thing, talking with the owner of the business that I work for and talking with Mr. Mackey to ensure that I could do things before, after, or during the launch hour. I feel like it is an appropriate and doable service that can contribute to the community and would ask for your vote and I'll be seeing you as I go around the community this fall or spring.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Appreciate it. Councilman Flynn?
I just want to say that even though I'm 62 and a half years old, I'm not old. Even though I am retired, I am not well off. I have been called old, retired, and well off ever since I was elected, and I disagree with all three. Not all retired people are well off. Not all 62 and a half year olds are old. I would agree with Mr. Richardson, that younger blood, not only in this council, but pick any committee, I don't care where, church, school, I don't care. Pick any committee. They would love to have 20-year-olds and 30-year-olds and 40-year-olds on their committee. It's their choice. About the only committee that I couldn't join would be county commissioner. They, for whatever reason, meet at nine o'clock in the morning on Tuesday, which, if you want to look at somebody that you have to be retired to be a county commissioner, that would be the one. Four, I think, of the five still work on the county commission. Mr. Ingles has worked his time and has retired, but the other four find time to be a county commissioner. Every other meeting in this county is at night for that sole purpose that anybody can be on that if they get elected to it, whether it be the North Avenue School Board, whether it be the Wright Township Board, whether it be us. Yet, it's spinks, you know, that you have to spend some of your free time on a Monday night listening to people bitch and complain, but that's what we signed up for. But the 30 and 40-year-olds, except for Mr. Brens, who was voted in, I'm assuming you fall in that category, you know, chose to run. Apathy is, if you want to find a word that's killing any committee, that's it. Getting people to run. It's not, oh, they don't have time, or they're too old or they're too young. It's just, they don't want to. So, if you're watching on YouTube, if you're listening tonight, you know, you have until four o'clock tomorrow afternoon to submit 25 signatures to be, to run for city mayor. We don't care how old you are or how young you are, you know. And the same with county commissioners, they'll be up next year, and four of these seats will be up next year. Run. It doesn't cost you a dime to put those applications in to get those names. So, I don't feel old. And yes, I am retired, but trust me, ask my wife and ask my bank, I am not well off. But I chose to do this for a reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Any other council comments? Councilman Stuchel?
I would like to echo that. I think I have the most credit here on council. I am 70 years old and I still work 50-plus hours a week, and I own another small business on the side. And like you, I don't feel old either. One of the things I've noticed lately is we have more and more young people with beautiful families making deals at their home. And what's nice about this is they are more educated and they're more involved. And I think every city in America would look at that. However, I get a sense that there's this feeling, this impression that our city management system is broken or wrong. It is anything but broken or wrong. It is well-run. The reason it's well-run is because we have good professionals, department heads, who run this city out of professionalism and toss out of local community. So, if there needs to be a debate between some intellectual theory, process of government versus reality of a city management system that works, let's have some debate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stuchel. Any other council comment? I have a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Ward. Motion from Councilman Soha to adjourn, seconded by Councilman Stuchel. Is that right? Happy Easter, happy Easter time. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned.